Mile High Minute, number one podcast in the universe. Today, we are live in Denver, Colorado with Leslie Sumi, running for Arapahoe County Commission. How are you doing today?
I'm doing great. How are you doing?
Doing good. I appreciate you for coming on the show.
Thanks for having me. I'm excited about it.
Yes, of course. Shout out to Josh sponsoring the interview. But yeah, let's get right into it.
All right, cool.
So where are you originally from?
So, I grew up in Colorado Springs, El Paso County. My dad was in the Air Force. We got to Colorado Springs when I was four. He retired when I was seven. So I'm a Colorado Springs girl, which is actually kind of funny because when I left the area, people are like, "Where'd you grow up?" I said, "I grew up in Colorado." And they gave me that look like Colorado. Yeah, there are black people there. Everybody says that. No, there... Yeah, my family, a bunch of other people. And so, yeah, I grew up in Colorado Springs. My dad was the director of the Pike's Peak Community Action Agency. So I spent a lot of time in the streets with him, you know, working with the disenfranchised and the marginalized and helping people to be better, do better, have better. And so I come from a family of service. And I left Colorado Springs. I went to Colorado College for a little while. And I'd like to tell people I made a guest appearance there. And then I left and went into the Navy and spent 11 years in the Navy. Got to the top of my field at the United States Navy Band in Washington DC. I had a security clearance. It was presidential support. That's where I met my husband, got married, had some kids. And, you know, and here we are. Here we are. I wanted to come back to Colorado. I miss the mountains. I missed no humidity. I missed... You know? You know, so I just missed a lot. I loved living in the DC area. You know, all of our kids were born in the DC area. And that was wonderful. But I love being out here. Love being back here. So I was able to come back before both of my parents passed. My father just passed recently. My mother passed a few years ago. And I've been able to be here, you know, as they transitioned. And it's just nice. It's just nice.
My condolences on that.
Thank you, thank you. He lived 91 very full years.
Okay.
Very full years. You know, so we all right. I told him, I spent the night with him the night before he passed. And he was in hospice. And I was like, "Look, you actually can go." You know, "We know that you want to go." But his thing was, he never wanted to miss anything. So I think that he was just hanging on because he didn't want to miss nothing. He wanted to be helpful to the community and he didn't want to miss nothing. So he just stuck around. But so now he has been reunited with my mother. And we apologized to her because he was always the guy that was always out in the streets again. And she was really, really quiet, you know. But she was always hanging with him. So we told her, you know, when he transitioned, we said, "Look, we tried to keep him so you could get some rest. But you're just gonna have to, you know..." You get to deal with him now, Mom, so... But yeah, but what a blessing. A blessing to have your parents that long.
Yeah, most definitely. So you said you went to Colorado College?
I did.
And is that in the Springs?
It is. Colorado College, very small liberal arts, private school. Shishipoo-poo, as I like to say. It wasn't as shishipoo-poo when I was there. But it is definitely shishipoo-poo now.
Where did you study there?
I studied, well, you know, I was there for a year and a half. And so left second semester sophomore year. And so I was just really general studies before we were... I didn't stay long enough to get into my major. My major would have been voice performance. And but I started taking voice lessons, music lessons when I was a kid. And my first job actually was singing opera and Broadway in an Italian restaurant in Colorado Springs. So when I... And that was when I was still in high school.
Okay.
So I've always been really musical.
Heavy music background?
Yeah, heavy music backgrounds. As a matter of fact, that piano that's behind us, my dad bought that when I was 16. And so I was...
It's still in great condition.
It is. I was like, "Can I get the piano, please?" But so I used to come home every day from school and just play the piano, you know. And now, you know, my kids are able to play the piano.
That's awesome. How long did you spend at Colorado College?
I was at CC for a year and a half. I left second semester sophomore year. And then I worked for a little while. And then I said, "I want to see the world." So I went in the Navy.
So that was the only reason you just wanted to travel?
I wanted to get out. I wanted to get out of Colorado Springs. You know, I wanted to get out of Colorado Springs. So I said, "I'll go in the Navy."
It's a... Colorado's a beautiful place. But yeah, if you grew up here, you definitely...
Yeah.
You want to see the world a little bit.
Yeah, gotta go out, you know, do something. And it was a gig. It was a, you know, the thing that I wanted to do. I wanted to go into the military and be a singer. And a lot of people don't know that you can do that. A lot of people don't know that there is a whole, you know, in all of the military services, there are musicians. And as a matter of fact, in the Navy, being a musician, that's one of the oldest jobs in the Navy. And so people would, you know, we would go on to ships and, you know, play for changes of commands and retirements and, you know, and colors, morning and evening colors and all that. And, you know, or maybe do the dances and the receptions afterwards. And people would be like the ship's company. They would be talking about, it's like, "Oh, yeah, they're the musicians." And I'm like, "Yeah, well, you should have kept up those clarinet lessons." It could be you too, you know. But and it's one of the few jobs that you have to know how to do before you go in. And so and we had a neighbor when I was... When we were stationed in Washington DC, we had a neighbor who lived next door. We lived on Fort Belvoir in Virginia, on the Army post. And our neighbor said, "Oh," you know, because his military career was very traditional, you know. And so the thing that he said to us was that what you just have to, as a musician, you get your training before you come in. And we have to get our training after we come in. And I thought, "Yeah, that's interesting. That's interesting." I mean, there is training that you take and that you have to have. You go to A school, you go to B school, you go to C school. But so there are always different levels. But you have to have a basic understanding of your instrument before you get there. And in order to be in one of the Washington DC bands, because all of those bands are presidential support, you have to have an even higher level of musicianship in order to secure one of those auditions.
Okay. What instrument did you play?
I sing.
You sang, okay.
I sing, yep.
And you didn't do anything else besides that? You just stuck to...
That was it. Actually, there actually is something. When for... When you were in the fleet bands, because I spent five and a half years out in the fleet bands. There are different bands all over, you know, the fleet, in the field, in all of the services. And then the special bands are at the academies and in Washington DC. And so I was in one of the, in fleet bands, two different fleet bands before I took the audition for the DC band and got that. And when you are out in the fleet, vocalists, guitarists, pianists, they all have to play auxiliary percussion because a large portion of your job is doing the ceremonial music and not, you know, the popular music or the jazz or the classical. You know, it's a large part of it is doing the ceremonial. And so I got to play bass drum and cymbals. So which is kind of funny because being married to a drummer now, I'm like, "Look, if you need me to play some cymbals, I still got the, you know, I still got the chops. I can do that."
That's awesome. Okay. So you were in the Navy, you said 11 years?
11 years and 20 days.
That's awesome. How... It's 20 years to retire, right?
Yep.
And did you... Were you considering staying for the whole 20 years? Or you were just like, "No"?
I was, and a lot of people say that too. A lot of people say, "Well, you did 10 years. You might as well do 10 more." And I was like, "Wait a minute." First of all, that 10 years was not like a day in the park. It was not just, you know, it didn't go by real fast. And secondly, by that time, I was the mother. And we had already had our first child. And what I found was that I wanted to be in control of my time. And when you sign your name and you raise your hand for military service, you're not in control of your time. And so I made the sacrifice that I needed to be home with my kid. And the thing that really brought that home, there was one Easter where the president was going to be in, I don't know, Indiana somewhere. And they wanted a band there. And so they're like, "Look, get on the bus and go to where the president is." And I wanted to be with my kid. And I couldn't. I couldn't. So and, you know, knowing that we have so many people, you know, the military is your fighting force. You know, it is not lost on me that when I was in, I was in during Desert Storm, so the first Iraq war. And what I heard so often at that time was so many people that don't have opportunities or didn't have opportunities that said, "I just went into the military to get my education." And but then they end up going to war. And then sometimes they end up dying or being, you know, injured. And but unfortunately, that's what you sign your name and raise your hand to do. You know, you sign your name to support and defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, foreign and domestic. And nowhere in that oath of enlistment does it say what your job is going to be. So at any given time, even though I had a really nice job, at any given time, that could change. You know, my husband has been to, he's been to, he wasn't in Iraq, but he has been to Afghanistan. He's been to Kuwait, you know, and he's a drummer. You know? And so, you know, you do, you do... Your job is what the needs of the military. You know, it's not what your needs are. And so I decided I needed to get out so I could be the kind of mother that I wanted to be. And amazingly, that child is now 27. She lives in Oakland. She's an artist. She has a degree. You know, she's, you know, she's cool as I don't know what. But, you know, all my, all my kids are cool.
They area vibes?
Yeah, yeah. You know, we've got one in Oakland. We've got one in New York City. And we have one who went to school in Pennsylvania and is now home. He just graduated last year. We've got one going to school in Virginia. And we've got one who's still in high school. So but they're cool people because you never know. You never know. When you're, when you're a parent, you never know if you're doing it right. And so, you know, you have all of these thoughts and opinions about, you know, how my kid's going to be, what kind of adult they're going to be. But you don't know, you know. And we also always come to every relationship and every new job with the history that we grew up with. You know, so whatever, whatever trauma, whatever, you know, idiosyncrasies from your family, you bring that into the next thing. So I didn't know if my kids were going to be, you know, were going to have all of the things that I grew up with that, you know, that... We don't like everything our parents did. So I didn't know if I was going to pass that on to my kids. And there have been some things, some things I look at them and I say, "Oh, yeah, you got that from your mother. Sorry." But for the most part, they are really cool human beings. And they are making a really... They're making their own, you know, way in the world and making their own mark. And I love that. I love that.
All right. Now that you brought that up, I kind of wanted to ask, what were some of, I suppose, what was life like growing up for you? And we'll dive back into after the Navy. But what was life like growing up for you before the Navy and high school and stuff like that down in Colorado Springs?
It was, it was interesting. It was very interesting. You know, once I left and, you know, that whole conversation around, "Are there black people in Colorado?" Once I left and saw that, that there was this perception that there...
It's very still locked in.
Yeah, that's right. That's right. Yeah. The interesting thing was, I didn't notice that, you know, because I had a whole lot of, you know, people of color, of, you know, multi-ethnicities, you know. I had a lot. My upbringing was incredibly diverse and wonderful, the experiences that I got to have and the people that were able to touch my life, you know, and contribute to me being an adult. And it just was what it was, you know. And I think that's important. I think that's one of the things that really helped to ground me. My father was in a fraternity. My father was an Alpha Phi Alpha. One of the big things was going to the Divine Nine picnic every year, you know. And so I didn't even know. I didn't even know that there were fraternities and sororities that weren't all black for quite some time. So I was like, "Really?"
Because now when you think of a frat boy...
Yeah.
You know, a bunch of white people.
Yeah, I had no idea. I had no idea when I was a kid. I was like, "Oh, really? Well, you mean, not everybody's like that? Really?" So but, you know, I know now. But I had a really, I'm the youngest of three kids. And I'm quite a few years younger than the other two. So I was pretty much raised like an only child and much to the chagrin of my siblings. But that's the way it was. You know, that's the way it was. And so I, you know, I spent a lot of time with my parents. A lot of time, I didn't have that huge a social life myself. But I did a lot of socializing with my parents and their friends, which is really weird. You know?
I mean, it probably, you know, hoped to mature pretty fast.
I don't know. That remains to be seen. But, you know, they would go to balls and stuff and galas and the parties and I would go with them.
Okay, that's awesome.
But that's probably one of the reasons why I said, "I've got to go in the Navy."
Fair enough.
I got to go, you know?
Experience of life.
Yeah, yeah. But I went to James Monroe Elementary School. And then between sixth and seventh grade, we moved. And I went to Russell Junior High, which is now Russell Middle School. And I went to Doherty High School. And I went to Doherty when Mr. Doherty used to come to games in his leather jacket. That was very cool. We were like, "Oh, yeah, well, we've got Mr. Doherty." You know, so, yeah. And then that year and a half at CC, then the rest is, as they say, history. And I spent some time, I was stationed in Charleston, South Carolina, which I loved. It was a beautiful place, interesting place because I had not ever been south before. And now I'm very clear on what being south looks like. And it was very, very interesting. You know, a lot of the things that have to do with race that I was not met with in Colorado Springs. I was like, "Oh, this is what they're talking about," you know. And very interesting. And then I was stationed in San Diego, California. And then I went to DC and spent again, you know, over 20 years there before we came back home. And I had to fight with my husband too. I was like, "Babe, I really want to go to Colorado. I want to retire in Colorado. When you retire from the Army, where are we going to live?" And he's like, "Well, we're going to live here." We were in DC. And his parents or his whole family lives there in the DMV. And I said, "Well, I want to go to Colorado." And he, I had to talk him into it. But he loves it here now. And he's gotten cranked into the music scene, so...
That's awesome.
You know, he's, and he was able to keep, he also teaches. And so he was able to keep his, some students. He teaches on Skype and teaches at a music school here. I would love it if he would get into some of the university jobs if anything opens up. That'd be great because he was, he taught at Howard. He taught at George Mason. He taught at American.
Great schools.
Yeah, yeah.
So you spent almost 20 years in DC. You get out of the Navy. What were your plans like after that? I know you said becoming a mom. But as far as like a career path or anything like that, was politics starting to jump into your mind at that point? Or what were you thinking?
Well, what I thought, a couple of things. My dad also, aside from being the director of the Pike's Peak Community Action Agency, when I was in fifth grade, he ran for the school board. And so he was the, what I believe is the first black member of the school board in District 11 in Colorado Springs, yep. And then by the time I graduated from high school, he was the president of the school board. And he was definitely the first black president of District 11 School Board. So and, you know, I did student government in middle school and then in high school. But I never thought that I would be saying, "I actually want to, you know, be a politician." But the thing that I do want to do is help people. And one of the things that I decided to do was, you know, just be involved, you know. And here's a good backstory. In 2014, we were still living in the DC area. And I was looking at politics in Colorado and noticed that we had a congressman in El Paso County who I didn't think should be there. And I noticed that the Democrats would run retired Air Force officers against this one person. And I was like, "Why y'all do that? Because he beats you every time." And it's not that the numbers say that, you know, a Democrat couldn't win there. It's, I just don't think they had the right one. And because you've got a lot of unaffiliated voters, even if they lean right, you have a lot of unaffiliated voters that at the time still had common sense. And there is some social issues that they would be aligned with the Democratic Party on. So I said, "I'm going to go to Colorado and I'm going to run for Congress." This was in 2014. And my father was dead set against it.
He didn't want you to get into the politics?
That, but this is what he said. And so the candidate that was chosen by the party was a retired two-star general fighter pilot, academy grad, you know, had one child. Quite honorable man, wonderful man. But didn't understand, even if he was, even if he grew up poor, didn't understand what it was like to be a parent and not have the money to make all the bills work in the month. Or to be a parent and not be able to give your child whatever lessons or whatever camp or whatever, you know, extracurricular thing that they wanted to do. He didn't have that understanding. And I think that when you get into public service, you have to have an understanding of where everybody is. You know, at least a working knowledge of where everybody is because everyone is different. Everyone's journey is different. So my idea was, we want to go ahead and run for office in this area and in that district. And the Democrats had not run a woman since the 70s. They had never run a woman of color. I'm not sure if they ran even any men of color. That I don't remember.
And are you talking about El Paso?
Yeah, El Paso County at the time. Now that with redistricting, with redistricting, El Paso County is its own district. But it was, was it four? Four counties, four or five counties around El Paso County and then surrounding counties. But, but yeah, I decided to go do that and said, "What we need to have is somebody who is a woman and somebody who is an enlisted veteran, not an officer." Because your military community, your retired community is mostly enlisted. It's not mostly officers. So and also, I thought it would be great to have, you know, a mother and somebody who understood all of the issues that come with being a mother. Because whether we like it or not, women and men are treated differently. And the roles of parent, you know, they're still different. You know, whether or not they're, whether or not you operate that way in your family, the roles are still seen as society is different. And so I was like, "We need to have a mother," you know. And hey, and I'm a mother of five. So work that out. And but I just thought that I had a lot more in common with the everyday people who are trying to live their lives. And even though we had two kids who were, started their educations in the federally funded Head Start. So we didn't have any money at all. Even though we had two kids that started in Head Start, we have kids that ended up being at incredibly expensive private schools. We didn't have the money for that either. But there's financial aid, there are lots of grants, lots of things. And our oldest daughter's Head Start teacher was the one who got us on this whole private school road. So what that allowed me to do was to understand people's lives, you know, on the entire socioeconomic spectrum. So I know what it looks like to not have the money. But I also know what people think about when they have all the money. And so that helped me to navigate a lot of different spaces. And I think that's really valuable. And, you know, because when you are talking to people, when you're talking about who your voters are going to be or what the issues are in the community, in whatever district it is, you have to be able to speak to everybody. And I remember there was one time I was on the Board of Trustees and we were talking about raising fees the following year. And they were talking about raising a fee by $200 a year, which in the grand scheme of things doesn't seem like a lot of money. But the person, the trustee who was saying, "It's just $200 a year," had heated floors in her house. I'm like, "It's not, it's just $200 to you." But the people that you are putting that cost on, those are the people that are working two, three jobs so they can be here. So it's not just about, "It's just $200." It never is. And so I think, in this kind of a roundabout way of getting back to the whole political thing is that I just, I understand where people come from, you know. And I'm open to learning about the things I don't know. You know, I've had a conversation in the past couple of months with someone whose experience has been very different than mine. And I just came out and said, "Look, I don't know what I don't know, but I know you do. And I'm open to sitting at your feet to get it," you know. And I think we need more of that. I think we need more of that. So I didn't even make the primary in 2014. Had there been three people in the room who voted for me, three more people, I would have been in the primary. I would have forced a primary. Yeah, but I was okay with that. Because my goal at the time was to really bring more people into the process. You know, because I was like, "He's not going to beat this guy." And he didn't. But he's not going to beat him because he doesn't know what he doesn't know. And, you know, we, you have your political people who always vote and who are always involved in things and who are always, you know, show up to every event. But the people that make the difference But the people that make the difference are the ones who are on the periphery of that, who don't always vote. Um, who have not always been engaged, who might feel like, you know. Politics or government doesn't work for them, and so why should they? And those are the people that I wanted to talk to. Because you know, you you actually can make change. And starting locally is the way to do it. You know, start where you are, you know, begin where you are and and take a step. So um, and I I felt that me being there at that time, even if I was not going to force a primary. That I could be helpful to bring other people into the process because I come from a different community. You know, there are people that I went to elementary, middle and high school with. Who now have moved back to Colorado, raised their kids there and their kids vote. So um, let's come on. You know, but that was alright. They didn't want my help. I was like, oh, paid it for you. So and then um, it was, was it two years later or four years later that Stephanie Rose Spald- Spalding ran for the same seat? And um, she's done amazing things. Um, and she was teaching at a UCCS and now she is, she is running for Congress in Chicago. Which is wonderful. But I was really excited when she ran, cause I was like, it's another black woman. You go ahead, girl. Yeah, yeah, and she she did amazingly. She um, you know, she did amazingly in that race. She didn't win, but she did amazingly.
That's awesome. It's all about the process.
Yeah, it's about the process. It's about the process.
Well, I was going to ask. What do you say to those people who, you know? Cause like you said, there's a bunch of people who are obviously involved in the politics. They go to the debates and everything. But it's important to get the people who are outside looking in, uh, interested in voting. You know, I know a lot of people, I'm sure we all know a lot of people who would say, oh, you know, my vote doesn't count, things like that. So what do you say to those people to get them interested, to, you know. Make them change their mind and say, hey, no, look, like, like you said, change can happen. This is why it is important to vote and things of that nature.
I I say actually a couple of things. Um, one of the biggest things uh, that it's like a, it's like a uh. What's the word? Like a side effect of of being a registered voter. But it's one of the most important things. We know that we have issues with um, you know, black and brown people in the in the criminal justice system. One of the things that we need to have is juries. That are um, made up really of our peers. As opposed to juries that are made up of, you know, not our peers. Yeah, but juries are made up of people on the voter file. So you have to be a registered voter in order to get the jury summons. And so who do you want? Who do you want when you are, when you are accused of a crime? Who do you want to be on your jury? Somebody who understands your experience? Or somebody who has no idea about your experience, but they do a lot of TV watching? So that's one of the things, especially to young people, that I say, cause you never know. You never know when you're gonna get caught up and it's not your fault, you know. And you want to, you want to have your representation to be top notch. And you wanna make sure that if you end up, if you end up with a jury trial, that your jury is um, a good jury for you. So I tell people all the time, even if you never feel like you're gonna vote, you need to go ahead and be a registered voter. Uh, and so I start there. Um, the other thing about voting though, is that, you know, we can, can and do. We do a whole lot of complaining about things that are happening in the world, things that are happening on the corner, things that are happening with the potholes. So the reason that things are the way they are is because there hasn't been, there have not been enough people. That have been um, uh duly elected to perform the job, you know. So I I think that we really have to get to the point where. Uh, I would love to see Colorado as a state that uh, you have to opt out of being registered to vote. Um, there are some states, I wanna say Oregon is one of them. Where when you turn eighteen, you're automatically registered to vote. Isn't it?
I didn't even, I didn't even know that.
Yeah, well, you're automatically registered to vote, and if you don't wanna be, you have to opt out. Right, right. I think that's a real simple way of doing it. It's Oregon or Washington, it's one of those two. But um, but when I uh, heard that they'd they'd done that, I thought, that's amazing. And and it's, it, you know, it's a real simple thing to do. It's a simple thing to do. That, you know, when you turn eighteen, you are registered to vote. If you don't wanna be registered to vote, you have to opt out. You know, and then once you're registered, the next step is, well, maybe I should try voting. You know, and now we have Google, so you can Google absolutely everything. You know, you can Google all your candidates, you can Google all the initiatives, you can Google all the judges, you know, and and I look everybody up. I look up all the candidates, I look up all the judges. I'm like, I'm not voting for a judge just because they're there. I'm voting because I've seen, you know, who appointed them, um, and and what their record is. You know, so, but those those are a couple of the things that I say about voting.
Okay, that's awesome. Let's talk about some issues in the community. Uh, Rappahoe County, uh, Aurora, Denver, Colorado as a whole. What are some issues in the community you feel like you can have an impact on or or you want to be a voice on? Uh, that you feel like we can improve as a state, as a county, etc.
There there are quite a few things. Um, the first thing, the the first thing that I actually do believe that I would be a voice for. Uh, is that going back to that socioeconomic piece. As a Rappahoe County Commissioner, your county commissioner set the budget for the county. There are five county commissioners in Rappahoe County. And um, each representing a different portion of of the county. Uh, District Four uh, encompasses South Parker, this is roughly. South Parker Road to Bellevue to Buckley to Mississippi, roughly. So um, and all of the people that live in there. So uh, very diverse. Um, and depending on where you live, you could have more or less resources. So I believe that one of my forties in in coming forward. Is having the understanding of that whole socioeconomic piece. And looking at that budget, um, you know, our Rappahoe County budget is four hundred, like million? Something like four hundred and five million, something. And and we don't have enough money. You know, we have funds that are coming from the federal government for the pandemic, but those funds are gonna run out. And so we have to be able to look at the budget and determine where those funds are gonna go. And so we need somebody who's going to be on the county commission. That understands how the allocation of those funds are going to affect every member of the community. And so I just, I think I'm unique in that way, just because my walk has been been kinda different. You know, I'm like, oh, I'm sitting in this room with lots of people that have lots of money. And I'm just acting like I'm accustomed. Um, so I think that's a, that's a big thing. One thing that we know about. Rappahoe County too, is that in this area, you know, we don't have, we have children who don't have anything to do in the summer. So we have community centers that close, depending on where you live. And we have community centers in other areas of the county that are thriving and wonderful. We need to be able to put resources um, into the communities that have fewer. That have fewer options. Because without the options. Why would we expect that our kids are going to grow up and be curious? Or be critical thinkers, or you know, be creative, when we haven't given them any, any options? You know, we we need to do that. So um, I think we need to place more um, focus on. How we elevate the least of these in the community. Our children, our seniors, our veterans, you know, we need to actually do that. Um, Rappahoe County is going through now, we had, we were part of the Tri-County Health Department. Now that has been disbanded. And Rappahoe County is now um, starting its own. As of January first, you know, they're doing a lot of preliminary things and that they're, that they need to do, of course, now. But as of January first, it's going to be the Rappahoe County Health Department. We need to make sure that since we are on the ground level of that, that everyone in the community is represented. That we've got our immigrant community, that we've got our um, military community. Even though, you know, our military community does a lot of military things and with the Veterans Affairs and what have you. But we need to make sure that that's going to speak to everyone, not just the select few status quo. You know.
There's a couple of things I wanna touch on with that. So, do you feel like with more resources? That communities in Denver, Aurora, Colorado Springs even. Um, where there may be a lot of like crimes and stuff going on, do you feel like if there's more resources? That would help those communities out a lot more? I know that's, it sounds like that's basically what you're saying, you know?
That's the short version. That's the short version. The longer version is, eh, eh, first of all. I mean, yeah, any, any, any time that you were going to put, put your financial resources, put your energy. In a, in a space, that gives you the opportunity to make that space better, whatever it is. You know, if it's a neighborhood, if it's a building, anytime you're gonna add some energy to that, you're gonna be able to make it better because we're focused on it. Um, and without focus, I don't know how it was when you were a little kid. But when, nobody was paying attention to me when I was a little kid, that was when I was drawing on the walls. Which may have been fun, may have been creative, not the best use of my time and resources and energy. Um, and had consequences of that. So I think when you, when you, you shine the light on it. And you have more people involved and you have more money involved and you have more energy involved and more activity involved. You have no other choice but to, but to raise the level, you know. So when we are thinking about um, like a, like. Areas where where, you know, community centers are closed or where programs are shut down. And kids in school don't have anything to do over the summer and left to their own devices. And parents that are just trying to make ends meet, cause that's what we're all trying to do. We're trying to make ends meet, you know. So when we, when we take all of that stuff away and say, well, you know, you're just gonna have to be left to your own devices. You know, we know that, that um, you know, as I say this all the time as a mother, that my children, when they're like, mom, why are you telling us this? Cause you're a teenager and your brain is not developed yet. Like you have not hit twenty-five, your brain is not developed, so this is gonna happen, just don't do anything stupid. So do that all the time and it drives them all nutty. But so when, what, but what we, we can look at is um, someone had shared with me. Uh, recently about a study from Tufts University. Um, and they, they named, um, and I haven't had time to really dig into it. I'm excited about it, but I'm not gonna be digging into it until after this election. But um, they were talking about the seven things that children need to thrive. And it starts when they're little people, you know, and so, and it, and it's things that you don't necessarily. Look at on a daily basis, but if these things, if if these things are part of the experience of children. They will grow up to be better adults. You know, they will grow up to be adults that make choices that um, are not. So um, detrimental to them living their lives the way they wanna live them. And um, so it starts, it starts with, and that's another thing, you know, that, that I consider myself to be a real creative thinker. You know, and so we can go along with things the way they are and say, well, we've got this program or we've got this task force. Or we've got this that we're going to be doing, but we can go through the motions all day long. And with task force and with, with task forces and with programs and we can go through the motions all day long. But if we're not dealing with the fundamentals of that, you know, with what's underneath that, we're not gonna affect change. We're just gonna keep doing the same thing that we've been doing, you know, like you were asking about um. About our new um, Aurora Police Chief, you know, I'm interested to see, well, what's gonna change? You know, what's gonna change? I have a kid um, who's on the autism spectrum. Um, and um, I, you know, I'm like, my kid could could run up against now, and I know good and doggone well. Who my child is, but my kid could run up against a police officer and not respond the proper way and end up dead. You know, I have. Yeah, you know, and I have a, a, a child who um, runs, um, our twenty-three-year-old. He runs sixty, seventy miles a week, you know, I, I don't understand why he does that, but. He's a distance runner, you know, sweet as pie. But I can't help but think, if he's running through the wrong neighborhood as a black man, he might not respond the right way and end up dead. You know, so these are things that we have to, that it's not gonna, it's not gonna change just because you change who who's at the top of something. You know, and so if you're gonna come in and say, we, we've got a new task force, no, uh-uh, that's not how, that's not. Okay, so after that, what happens? You know, after that, what happens? And I look at everything through the lens of, you know, my mother lens, cause I have my own children. I sit on um, a task force of Rappahoe County that focuses on racial equity in the criminal justice system. And I'm the only person who sits on that ta- on, on that, that um, subcommittee. Um, the only person who sits on that subcommittee who's not associated with an office, an agency or an organization. I am a mother of five, I'm a black woman, and my children are black children. And um, I am really focused on what we need to do there. What I have noticed is that a lot of people, um, cause the, it's a, and it's a great place to be. I love the meetings, I, you know, really love the people that that are there at the meetings. But what I've noticed happened is at the very beginning, there were black and brown people that would, that were at the meetings. There were justice-involved people that were at the meetings. And then over time, it, those people um, with all of their wonderful ideas. Um, have migrated away from the meeting. And now the meetings seem to be, even though they've done excellent things, like they had a warrant clearing event, which was so cool, you know. So they've done excellent things, but now it's, there's, there are not so many people of color that are involved. And I'm like, how are we sitting here with a subcommittee that focuses on racial equity in the criminal justice system? And we don't have people who are racially equitable in the criminal justice system at the meeting. Yeah, yeah, and it's, it's been interesting to watch, interesting to watch. And and I had a conversation with one person that had been at the meetings, and I said, hey, I noticed that you're not there. And um, they were like, look, you know, I, I can't swing it, you know, and I said, I get it. I said, well, just tell me what I need to know. Because I'm happy to sit there, you know, I'm happy to sit there and um, ask the questions that need to be asked. Um, and uh, and to look through the lens that's not my lens, you know, I haven't been justice-involved. You know, there's only so much I know, you know, but I definitely, you know, can learn from those who have been. And I can be an advocate for those, for those who have been. You know, so.
Well, yeah, I was, I was curious to hear your thoughts on that because, um, and I may be a little biased. Because I'm more involved with like the, the rap hip-hop community with my interviews and stuff. But I feel like, like it, it kinda goes back to the point earlier where you said, oh, is there black people in Colorado? I see a lot of artists and stuff like that, you know, looked over, especially on a national uh, spectrum, you know. You know, no one even knows there's a budding rap hip-hop scene here. But there's a lot of talented artists that we could use more resources in, in communities where a lot of these artists are coming from. And I feel like if there was just more resources, you know, you know, studios, uh. Labels, different money going into these communities that. It would help out these artists' careers to where, you know, like you said, they wouldn't necessarily have to worry about getting into. For lack of a better term, street politics or what have you, you know what I'm saying? That's why I was, I was interested in that. And like you said, you know, it, it really is deeper than what's just on top. You know, what's the root cause of a lot of these things, you know, and I feel like a lot of it has to do with generational curses.
Right, 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 right.
Which is uncomfortable, you know, topic.
Yeah, but it's true. It's true. I mean, you look at, you look at, um, you know, we come, you know, my community. Most of my community exists here in this country because of American chattel slavery. Now, so, and there is a woman um, who. She teaches on post-traumatic, post-traumatic slave syndrome. And one of the things that she had said. Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll look it up and and um, get that for you. But one of the things that she said was, you know, we have people that survived the Middle Passage. That, you know, in the bowels of ships to be here. That had been separated from everything that made them them. And have been forced to live in this particular system. And we have done that for generations. And once, you know, once slavery was abolished technically, um, then, you know, we still had to just go on. Where's the therapy, you know? We, 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 so we're living with all of that. And remember when I said that you, you come to every relationship with what happened in society, what your parents grew up with? So you come with all of that, and if people are not addressing that, what kind of life can you live? You have to be able to look at it and to address it. And, and, and you still have to be able to look at it and address it in the system that we're in. So, for instance, at a county commissioner's meeting, still knowing that everybody at that meeting is coming with their own set of biases, they're coming with their own backgrounds, they're coming with their own everything, and so how do you plug into that? To make sure that you are doing the best thing for your community, you know, for your district? How do you do that? You know, so absolutely, we do, you know, we, we have to start talking about, and we've got big things happening, say, in mental health, um, uh, especially for, um, for our, our kids. Uh, now, I know the legislature had, um, uh, passed a bill that, um, and I think it was last session, that passed a bill that, um, that kids were offered mental health services. We need that, we need that, because we need our children to be able to, I mean, here we are sitting through, going through COVID, what that, what's gonna be happening twenty years from now? If we're not addressing, if we're not addressing what COVID did to us as, as a people, you know? If we're not addressing it, how are we going to be on the road that says, okay, I am creative, I am a critical thinker, I am successful, I am, you know, I'm able to do what I wanna do in the world? You know, because that's what we want. You know, when you have a child, what you want your kid to do is, is to grow up and do big things, you know? Nobody has a child and says, well, I just want you to sit on this log, you know? Nobody says that, you know, we all have dreams and goals for our children. We all have dreams and goals for our lives. And, but there have been so many people that, you know, that have not taught us how. You know, that have not taught us how. So we need to get to the point where, where our, our government works for us, where it's not just some sort of exercise, and here's the budget, and here's this program, it's not an exercise. You know, the people that make up the, that make up Arapahoe County District Four are human beings. And we have to take that into consideration. It is never just about, uh, the next program, or the next, the next, um, you know, the next thing that we need to vote on, it's never about that, it's about the people. And that's, you know, my background is that, you know, my dad taught me that, it is about the people. It's, and, and, and it's also never about you, which can be hard, you know? Yeah, yeah, but, you know, and, and when you say, you're talking about studios, that's one thing. That's one thing that, that I noticed when I got here, and, you know, my, my genre is jazz, you know? Um, that's, you know, what I, I love to sing, um, you know, my husband is, his musical, I mean, he, he's the smart one musically. I stay over here, he's like. But what I noticed when I moved here was that there aren't studios that, you know, like, that I just knew to go to.
Right, right, you have to really, I mean, people ask me every day, where's the studios? And I, in my head, I'm used to it, I know all the studios, but I'm like, what do you mean, Googling?
Right, it's hard to find, it's hard to find.
And even the studios that are, you could, you find that a lot of studios, they open, they close quickly, because they don't have the right funding, they don't have the right people, you know, willing to work at the studios and stuff.
That's right, that's right, yeah. So, and, and, um, so that's been very interesting to come here, I mean, I had all the systems set up, you know? If I needed a piano player, I knew who to call, if I needed, you know, any instrument, I have my list of people that I would call when I had, had, had a gig. If I was going to a studio, I knew who I was going to, you know? I knew how many records he had on the walls, I knew how many Grammys he's won, you know? And, and, um, you know, and I like to tell people, we're, my, my husband and I are Grammy-adjacent. You know, we have people, we have friends who have Grammys. We're just Grammy-adjacent. Because it's true, you know, it's true, because I'm like, wow, that's so cool, and we'll see people like, oh, there we go, you know? We know you, and, um, very, it's, it's cool, but we're, we're Grammy-adjacent. But yeah, just trying to, to make sure that, that the systems are operating, um, for the good of the people. And not the good of the, the power players, you know? And I'm always, I'm that person, I'm that person that says, it's not, you know, I don't really care about the people that have the power. Yeah, I mean, I care, you know, but when it comes to who's gonna be okay in the world, it's not gonna be the people that, that are just trying to keep their head above water. The people that are gonna be okay are the people that have the resources, and that have had the resources, and continue to have the resources. And we need to get to a point in our society where we're doing something different. Otherwise, that chasm between the haves and the have-nots is gonna keep getting bigger. And that cliff that the, the normal, everyday family can, can, you know, uh, fall off of at any time, that cliff is gonna be even higher, you know? And more people who were not going to, who maybe years ago would not see themselves at the edge of that cliff, ready to be devastated financially, they're gonna be right on the edge of it, because we're not paying attention.
That makes sense, and I mean, I feel like even a lot of Colorado artists and stuff like that could probably relate in a way where it's, I feel like a lot of moguls in the music scene out here, at least the rap hip-hop scene are, you know, connected with a lot of people out of state who, like you say, have records, you know, gold, platinum records and stuff like that, but we wanna see that in Colorado, you know? We wanna see, like you said, that hanging up in the studios and, and stuff like that. You know, it's gonna take more resources, and obviously people gotta work hard and stuff, but, you know? It's, it's, it's a lot easier to do it in somewhere like LA or, you know, New York. But at the same time, it's like Denver's a big city too, you know, it's not as big as those cities, but you see, you know, major hip-hop artists coming out of the Carolinas. Even Atlanta, you know, obviously the demographics are different, but Atlanta's smaller than Denver, you know? So why can't there be a budding hip-hop scene?
Why not, that's right, why not? Because we all know about Atlanta, you know? Um, so you're absolutely right about that. And, and, you know, Denver is one of the things that we've learned since we've lived here, because, you know, when I was a little kid, Denver was an hour up the road, and as a little kid, an hour was a long, long time. And, um, and, and, you know, we would come to visit, but we weren't, we didn't come to be here, you know? And now that we're here, um, it is amazing, the history that, you know, my husband and I have learned. You know, just about this city, you know, and the city and, um, you know, and, and the black people in it. And, you know, like. Yeah, right, you know, we didn't know that. I'm like, how is that I grew up in El Paso County and I didn't know that about Denver? We know that now, you know, we know that now. And, you know, just learning, when I was telling my husband, I said, yeah, well Frederick Douglass had sons that lived here, and, you know, Madam C J Walker lived here for a while, and, you know, he's like, really? Yeah, yeah, I'm like, in Denver. So, so what else you got for me?
That's a deep, it's a deep history. I suppose I did wanna ask what motivates you and what keeps you going to, you know, keep running for commission?
What motivates me is knowing that I can make a difference. I'm loud, you know, I'm loud. And sometimes, um, in the communities that I've been in, um, I have been the person that has said, you deserve to be here. Whoever you are, you deserve to be here. Um, there have been times when people have, I've been in spaces and people said, well, you know, I'm just happy to be here, and I'm just not gonna make any waves, I'm not gonna say anything, I'm just gonna go ahead and do that. And that's not how we affect change. You deserve to be here. And I am the person that will speak the language. I tell people all the time, I am not status quo, but I do speak the language fluently. And so I am that person that says, let's go, you know, take my hand, let's go. We're gonna go over here, we're gonna make this better. And when people are fearful, um, of the power structure, there's nothing to be afraid of. And, and, I mean, you know, I, it, it's, I had to learn it, I had to learn it. You know, there were times when my kids were little, because, and I say, you know, my kids, the reason I am the way I am now, yes, from my upbringing, but it's because I was an advocate for my children, you know? And it is because that I, that I had to, to challenge the power structure, you know? People that have so much more money than I have. People who had so much more, you know, uh, accolades, you know? But my children are important too. So my kid on the autism spectrum, my LGBTQ kids, my, my, you know, as we know, they all start out black, you know? And I remember, I remembered, uh, my kids, um, my two oldest daughters, that put this idea in my head when I was like, oh my gosh, this is a problem. They went to a school that was the first school in, in the state of Virginia to be racially integrated. And they did it four years before Brown versus Board of Education. So they were a, you know, a hot school. They're like, we are cutting-edge, we are going to have black and white kids together, educated together. And, um, uh, even had an in-ground pool so that the kids, the black kids could swim with the white kids, because of course pools were segregated. So, um, but I remember my, it was really cool, that I remember my kids, uh, in about, it was about third, fourth grade, that both of my daughters, the twenty-seven-year-old now and twenty-five, um, they both came to me and they said, mommy, um, my friends have asked me why my lips are so big, why my butt is so big. And I was mortified that at this school that they told us that, you know, everyone is, is, you know, equal, we are inclusive, we are diverse, we love everyone. I was amazed that they were being asked that question. And so as a mother, I said, well, did you turn around and ask them why theirs aren't? You know, and they didn't get that as little kids, you know? But as an adult, that's how I roll. You know, if you are, if your, your standard is just what you see, and you operate in the world that way, and we know that power structures operate in the world that way. They operate, this is what the standard is. And they leave most of society out because it's their standard. So we need to get to the point where we are flipping that script. So, you know, I am the one that will walk in the room and, uh, change the story, you know? Change the narrative.
That's motivating. I'm, I'm getting motivated.
Well, let's go. Let's go make some change, you know? So, yeah, that's, I mean, that's, that's what we have to do, you know? And, and we're not gonna be able to do it with the same kind of thinking that has gotten us here. And we gotta do something. I mean, I'm mad as I don't know what. I'm sitting up here in twenty-twenty-two, having to now think of the things, and starting in, you know, twenty-sixteen, having to think of the things and, and speak to my children about the things that my parents taught me in the sixties about race in this country. I'm so angry about that, you know? I'm so angry about that, and so, you know, we are now fighting the same doggone fight over and over and over again. I, I don't know how long I'm gonna be on the planet, but I do know that I would really love it if we could get out of that particular cycle. You know, it would be better for everybody, if we got out of that one, you know, so. Yeah, well, you know, I try, I talk a lot, I'm sorry, I, I really do talk a lot.
No, it's okay.
Ask my husband.
It makes for a good interview. More informative and, you know, be able to look back on. Okay, well, um, real quick, sorry. One more question, and then we'll get into, uh, where the people can find you on, on social media and have a vote and all that stuff. What made you want to become a Democrat? I know it's a basic question, but.
It, well, it's, it, he, here's what we have. We've got two major parties. So we know that the major parties, you know, they may not be the best, but that's what we got. You've got very few people that are able to affect change, um, as a part of another party, as one of the minor parties. Very few people that are able to affect that change. Now, do we want that? Yeah, we actually would like to get away from the two-party system. You know, yeah, we'd like to get away from that, but right now, this is what we got. So if, when I am looking at why I would choose to be a Democrat, why I would choose to be a Republican, what I'm looking at is which party attracts the people that are most like me. What I know is that white supremacists are not typically attracted to the Democratic Party. But they are attracted to the other one. I don't wanna be there. Yeah, I don't wanna be there. I don't wanna be a part of the, the party that says, you know, we just want to, want you to. I lifted myself up by my bootstraps. Okay, but what if you ain't got no boots? You know, what do we do? So. And that's not new, you know, it's not a new thing, and I didn't, I didn't make it up, you know? But, you know, I, I'm not, we are now in, in, in a place where the Supreme Court is about to say, no, women don't have a right to choose whether or not they're going to be parents. Wait a minute. Really? Because, because it's not going to stop abortion. What it's going to do is kill black and brown women who don't have money. It's going to affect women of all shades who don't have cash. It's not gonna affect rich women at all, at all. So, you know, I, I look at that, even, even though, and I look at, I look at, do I want to be aligned with the party that said, yeah, we'll go ahead and, and we like Donald Trump? I haven't liked Donald Trump since the eighties, and here's why. Donald Trump was married to Ivana, had three kids, and instead of, you know, people are people, relationships are relationships, I don't know what was going on in their marriage, but we do now, because he pulled out Marla Maples on the ski slopes, you know? And had the paparazzi on the ski slopes with Marla Maples while his wife was watching that stuff at home with her children. That's why I don't like it. I'm like, you did that on purpose? That's not how you do. You know, that's just not how you do. You know, he didn't respect his wife, he didn't respect his children, you know? You certainly don't have anything for me, you know? Not to mention, I'm like, what, did that man actually say that we should inject bleach for COVID? No, he did not, did he actually say that? You know, so, yeah, that's just a problem. So, yeah, that, that's why I'm, I am a Democrat, because the Democrats are most closely aligned with the things that are important to me. You know, and, um, certainly we want to, again, we wanna create change. We wanna make sure that, we wanna get to some point that we don't have a two-party system, but right now we do.
That was a good answer. All right, well, um, you're running for commission.
I am.
When, uh, is, do the ballots hang?
Oh, my goodness, ballots, your ballot has to be, um, in the ballot box at the, the clerk and recorder's office by seven o'clock on Tuesday, June twenty-eighth.
All right, so y'all have like a week to, to get those ballots done.
That's right.
This is coming out this weekend.
Right, let's go. That's right, get it done. Don't, don't waste time, just fill out, just fill out the little bubble that says Leslie Summy. And take that to the ballot box, it'd be a good thing.
Okay, and where can the people find you and follow your campaign and stuff like that?
You can follow my campaign at my website, which is LeslieforArapahoe. It's L E S L I E, the number four, Arapahoe, dot com. And also on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram, and at LeslieforArapahoe.
Okay, perfect, I appreciate you for coming on the show.
My pleasure.
Make sure you guys hit that like button, comment down below, who you wanna see next on the Mahi Minute, hit that subscribe button, and hit that. Hit that subscribe button and hit that bell button to stay notified when all the latest news drops. Make sure you go vote for Leslie Summy in the upcoming Arapahoe County uh, commission.
Arapahoe County Commission District Four.
District Four.
On the Democratic ballot.
Yes.
That's me.
All her links will be in the description of this video, and uh, I think that just wraps it up.
Thank you, I'm so excited.
Of course, Maha Minute, number one podcast in the universe.